Okay, good evening everyone. We're gonna open up the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, February 6th here at the Council on Agent. We've called the meeting to order, but we're gonna do something a little bit different tonight and hopefully continue this every time we open up a meeting and that is to all stand in Pledge Allegiance to the Flag. The flag is over in that corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And that was a nice reminder that a lady sent to us and asked us to do that and I think she's right on the money. And Jack will tell us a little bit about the lady that did that later on in the meeting. Also, I guess whether you're a Patriots fan or not, and I think there might be one or two people that are not Patriots fans in the audience here, but we have to say it was an unbelievable game last night. Something that was well worth staying up for. All right. Next thing on the agenda...oh, the meeting is gonna be kind of a lengthy meeting tonight because once we get through the Board of Selectmen's items, we're gonna meet with the Finance Committee. In between there, we're gonna sandwich in the Executive Session. Finance Committee, this is our first meeting with the Finance Committee and our first look at the budgets that were submitted by the different departments. So that's what's going on tonight. All right, the first thing on the agenda is to...huh? Oh, that's right. Who's recording?
I am.
I am. I am. Okay. FreeCam, Ally, Paulson.
There's three IMs for recording.
The three IMs. You just don't know which one is which. Okay. First thing...is that it?
Yeah.
Is that anything else? No? Okay. All right, first thing on the agenda is to approve and sign of the, an annual Patriot Half Marathon from Sun Multi-Sports Events on June 17th, 2017, for Route 105, Route 18. Also approve a donation from Sun Multi-Sport to the town of Freetown. So I would assume that you are here, identify yourself and tell us all about it.
Sure. My name is Mark Walter. I'm the owner and race director at Sun Multi-Sport Events. And I asked Ally if I would have an opportunity to come down today. I know you have a very packed schedule, so I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I really came down for two reasons. One, I wanted to thank you for the support, the approvals that the town has given to both the Cranberry Tri-Fest Race, which is based in Lakeville, and our Patriot Half, which is based here at Cathedral Camp. Cranberry's been going on for 16 years. This'll be the 11th year of the Patriot Half. They're very well loved by the athletes that do them every year. The Patriot has won awards and I just really wanted to come here because I haven't been here, I think, in a long time, just to again say thank you and let you know that, you know, these races, I recognize some people. There's an inconvenience because bikes on the road or runners or whatever, I totally understand that and we take a lot of pride and try to put on a very safe race, clean up after and I just wanna say again, thank you and if at any time there's ever any issues or anything we can do, you know, I'm all about trying to improve and work with the towns. We also try to work with local groups to make donations back to them that maybe help us with the event. We've worked with the Freetown Athletic Association for a lot of years, so yeah, so really first and foremost, I wanted to say thank you and just kinda come here in person to do that and secondly, to ask your approval again for 2017. And the information's all provided that Ally has passed on. And if there's any questions, I'm certainly here to help and answer.
Any questions?
The only question is, have we had any complaints about any of these races?
Just one a while ago about trash, but I think that that's been handled and Ally kinda looks over that and makes sure that the fee is covered.
Yeah.
In case it's the trash, so he has to go out. I don't think we've had any.
Okay.
And it was approved by the police chief and the officers? There's a motion?
Make a motion to approve the annual Patriot Half triathlon from Sun Multi-Sports Events for June 17th for Route 105 and Route 18. Also to do the annual Cranberry Tri-Fest for August 19th and 20th. And do you do the Tour de Gris too or no?
No.
Okay. I'll just do those two for right now.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's okay. Well, set with that. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for the donation.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So I guess Ally, just let me know what you decide and mail the check in whenever, you know, when you decide.
Million dollars?
I wish. Well, thanks again.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Please never hesitate if there's anything, Ally, you know, any complaints, you know, the last thing I wanna do is, you know, hear about that, so I wanna address those.
Thank you so much.
Have a nice, nice night. All right, the next thing on the agenda is to approve and sign the second annual Tour de Gris for May 21st, 2017 through town.
Make a motion.
Same question I had before, did we have any complaints from last year?
No, we didn't.
Second motion.
Motion made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh-oh, somebody's phone, somebody's car. All right, let's see. Jack, do you wanna give your report next?
Yeah, it's been a busy, busy time. Last few days, we've been working on procurement for bypass valve that the one we've got has got out to bid and on March 3rd, well, that'll be opened. We got all the paperwork done for that today and last Friday. Kevin Bernado and I have been spending a lot of time responding to EXO complaints, as the board knows. And we've been in touch with the three people at DEP that are also responding to those complaints. We've also been out to the site, Kevin and I. Were taken through the entire site by the Costas, by Marty and John Costa. And they described to us some of the improvements that they intend to make between now and the end of, actually, it's a 90-day trial period, which won't end until about mid-March. As you know, we're getting together with the neighbors next time you meet.
21st.
On the 21st, correct. And so there's, there's a lot going on and as I said, Kevin and I have been, every time I hear that there's another complaint and I've been able to go with him, he and I have both gone up to respond to the complaints. There's an ongoing tire issue that I've shared some information with you about. We have a letter from Bob Exafaris, Mr. X. I'm sure you well know Mr. X. He is trying to get a DEP to resurrect some unfinished business and it's been established that in fact, it wasn't followed up on properly and there's still remaining tires out there that need to be taken care of. This is a problem that's been going on for many years and it needs to be resolved with some kind of finality so that the property can be put to a productive reuse. And so I've, I've been in touch with Mark Dakers, the DEP. He's had one of his staff people go over the history of the project and the problem and so that's an ongoing issue, I think, that we need to spend a little bit more attention Tomorrow, several of us, including Warren, Warren's with us tonight, our planning technician, and Kevin Demarest and Kevin Bernado and I are all going over to Totten for a training with the, with this being put on by the Regional Planning Agency. It's a briefing for municipal officials on marijuana legalization and local land use And the presenter is Attorney Barbara St. Andre of Copeland and Page. And so we'll be there from noon to probably 2:00 for that training. And this is the packet of information that CERF had sent out for us to read in advance of the, of this training, so there's some interesting stuff coming up. And you'll be hearing and having to deal with a lot of that in the not-too-distant future. The chairman mentioned a young lady that, from Middleborough, that sent us a little note, you've all seen it, asking why we didn't pledge allegiance to the flag. And Terry Page is the lady's name. She's disabled, she's in a wheelchair, and she's, she is one who watches every, every...she lives in Middleborough, but she watches all of the cable shows of different selectmen's meetings in the, in the region and noticed that we weren't doing something that she thought we should. So she, she's a dear friend and we thank Terry for calling that to our attention. And the board's taking care of it and will for marijuana, sure. And finally, last, about a week ago now, I sent you a letter and I'll just read pieces of it. Dear board members, it's budget prep time and for that reason and several others, I'm taking this opportunity to notify you, as I'm obligated to do under our employment agreement, that my last workday will be June 22nd, 2017. I weighed many factors in making this decision, but in the end, it came down to just a few things. Most people who know me well would tell you that I am most passionate about my faith, my family, my community, and helping children who get to the third grade without developing good reading skills. I run a program in Middleborough for more than 15 years now. Reading Express Workshop, where we teach right-brain dominant visual learners, kids that don't take kindly to phonics, how to read. And along with spending some more time in administrative work for my church and I don't know how many of you know, I also recently got appointed to the Planning Board in Middleborough. I'm on the Zoning Board of Appeals, I'm one of the five commissioners of the Gas and Electric Department. So my growing responsibilities on the town side back at home have taken more time as well. So, long story short, I noted that together we'd accomplished a great deal over the two, three-year periods that I've worked for the town. We've been able to appoint good skilled people to key positions. We've made significant building improvements. We've taken actions to reduce electric costs to all our residents and small businesses from the aggregation program. We purchased energy credits and significantly reduced both town and elementary school power costs significantly. We entered into a tax agreement with Amazon, which has brought our residents good paying jobs and will soon pay significant taxes to the town. That's 40% of the building, as you know, is in our town. We entered into a host community agreement with American, which will result in full taxes being paid on a facility that will at full build-out be nearly 1 million square feet in area. In addition to the taxes, American will make a payment of $1 per square foot per year, every year that they're in operation. And every five years, under the agreement, the payment will increase based on the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. American will be breaking ground this spring with their first 130,000 square foot building. And I also wanted to mention the fact that we got involved in a wonderful community building exercise this past year when we worked together to build the beautiful playground that we have now at Pathway Park. So those are some of the things I see as highlights of the time I've been here and I'll miss you all and I wish you Godspeed.
Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome.
Jack, three years I've been working with you and appreciate the direction and help that you've given the town. I just wanna work backwards a little bit on the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
Yeah.
I'm glad that she said that to us because I'm on a number of boards in other organizations and we always start our meetings, whether it's a general meeting or a Board of Directors meeting, the same way with the, with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and I hope we continue doing that. Let's step back a little bit to Mr. X and I'm only telling this so the people will know, Mr. X owned a significant piece of property over on Brayley Road and I know it was about three years ago that he approached us, when I say us, he approached the town along with Reverend Dias and the DEP to come down. They wanted to do a presentation. He was talking about putting multiple solar panels in that area. And again, really doesn't have anything to do with Freetown, but at that point in time, DEP had, I'm doing this from memory, given him authorization to put solar panels there without clean up anything in the open area except for the piles. There's a couple of massive piles of tires and that just fell down, just gone by the wayside.
Yeah.
So hopefully DEP will get involved and clean up the rest of those tires. This has been sitting there for, the last time tires were removed from there was about 10 years ago. The other comment I wanna make is EXO. We have a meeting with all the individuals that live near EXO and EXO on the 21st, which is our next meeting. And just so the board knows, I have asked Jack to contact our attorney, which would normally be Jonathan Silverstein, so he could be here during that meeting because last meeting was pretty contentious and I'm hoping that we don't have the same situation. Luckily Jonathan is flying back from St. John's that day, so Mark Rich is gonna come down and sit in and Jonathan has brought Mark up to speed. In addition, I made a request to Jack and also to our health agent that if possible, I'd like to have a DEP official here because DEP is extremely involved in this and they're the ones that, that issued a permit for these people to run, the primary permit. We have a secondary permit where we can put restrictions and so forth, which we have done on time, but it would be nice if DEP officials would show up. So far, as far as I know, they have not agreed to come at least.
Yeah, and I think that primarily has to do with the fact that they, at that point in time, they'll be in, they'll be in, they'll have just begun to do their piece of this 90-day process. In other words, right up to now, EXO has been in a shakedown mode and they've got their own sound engineers out there and they've gotten some recommendations in terms of things that they need or should do in order to further attenuate some of the noise and other nuisance effects of the operation. They will have, over the course of the next several weeks, begun to do some of that work and DEP officials in the last three months, I'm sorry, the last month of the three-month period will have, will be in, in the process of going through and doing their own testing and their own review. So that's, that's the reason I think that they're reluctant to be there, but I can certainly put some more pressure on to at least have a representative.
Well, let's see if the board would like to send DEP a letter inviting them to the meeting.
Yeah.
All right, so we've got three people, including, I mean, my two co-boards, myself. I think we should send them a letter saying, we have this meeting.
Yeah.
You guys are the ones that govern the issues. There's a lot of questions that are being asked by the people, at least as of the last meeting, that we can't answer.
Sure.
You're the guys that are gonna answer, so that's, I appreciate that. All right, we good to go on this?
All right.
All right. Everybody good?
Yes.
Next one on the agenda, Chief Carlton Abbott, our police chief. He has a couple of things that he wants to talk to us about, so come right up, Carlton.
Good evening.
Hi.
A short time ago, I delivered two policies into your possession. One is a student intern policy and the other is a ride-along policy. And basically, both of those policies structure programs that we have or had in the past and include indemnification and rules and regulations and things like that. With respect to the student intern policy, we get a number of inquiries throughout the year from college students, particularly Freetown and Lakeville College students who are interested in, you know, law enforcement, criminal justice. Initially, we had them just photocopying papers, which, that's, that's a waste of time. It doesn't do us any justice and it doesn't do them. So we took some suggestions from faculty at Bristol Community College and we put together a program that involves online training where the intern has access to various policies and procedures and examinations. The intern also can be physically present on various dates at the station. Would also have a number of hours riding along in the cruiser. At the end of the program, the intern has to put together a paper that's satisfactory not only to us, but to his or her school as well. There is a background investigation conducted for all of the interns and they would have to be 18 years of age or older.
One of the, one of the concerns that I had when we, when I first read this was, was there gonna be a cost to us as far as personnel? And I don't see it in the package, but I asked Carlton if he would give us a letter, tell us what the cost is. And that was sent out to all of us, correct? That letter that Carlton, I don't see it in the package.
I'm sorry, yeah, via email.
Did anybody see that? Okay, and just to reiterate.
Okay, to reiterate, there is no cost. What has happened in the past with the ride-along program is an officer's nephew or family member or friend who's interested in police work or criminal justice would ask to ride along. We'd have them execute an indemnification agreement that had previously been provided by Copeland and Page and that's kinda how the program worked. No officer at any time asked for any additional compensation. If we ever came to that point, the program would certainly be suspended because, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna compensate people for this type of activity. With respect to the student internship program, Sergeant Rose is assigned to that. He is indicated he expects no additional compensation. We'll take student interns when we have time and other resources available. He'll be the designated person on that. So I, and similar to my point about the ride-along, if at any point he asks for additional compensation, we would suspend that program. So I see no risk of grievances or additional compensation needed to be paid to anyone.
Really? Okay. Cause that was my question, is that internship coordinator?
Well, that's a, that's a good question.
I mean, all coordinators want some sort of...
Well, I, well, I think, I think I spoke to all, if Sergeant Rose was looking for compensation for anything, I think he'd probably be looking for accreditation and a compensation. I think that would be a higher priority. I think he really does this out of a love for it, really. I mean, he's, he's into it, so to speak, so.
Did you guys see the letter? As long as you saw the letter, it's just goes out in there.
Would he be solely responsible for the, for the students or would they be assigned to field training officers to ride or would he only ride with them?
He'd be solely responsible for the student interns. The ride-along program, if, if for example, you had a member of the public approach you, you could refer them to me, I would assign a field training officer in that case because they have the background, et cetera, appropriate modeling skills. So that's how I would handle that.
And they're already getting a compensation for that?
That's correct.
So this, this would not be an additional compensation?
That's correct.
Roughly, how many students do you, are you gonna cap the program or is the program already open-ended?
Well, I think optimally, we might be able to handle one a year, two a year at the most. A lot of things going on, but the way the program's designed now, a lot of work can be done off-police side at the home, so I still think one or two at the most.
Per semester.
Maybe the year.
The year.
Yeah. Yeah.
How many requests are you getting right now for ride-alongs?
Well, probably a couple a year, but if we ever move toward a citizens' police academy, that might be part of it. So it's, it's a building block toward that, but again, maybe a couple of requests a year.
And just to reiterate what you have already put, they're not gonna have any, they're gonna be instructed not to have any interference with the officer on the officer's duty?
Right. They shouldn't even be getting out of the police car on a call.
Okay. Same thing with the interns?
For both, right?
Yes, for both, yes. But there, I mean, the job has inherent risks, you know?
At the direction of the, of the officer in charge of their training, correct? I saw that in here somewhere. Just wanna reiterate the viewing audience.
Why would somebody wanna do a ride-along?
Well, let's, let's say you have somebody from the community that might be interested in the auxiliary program or the reserve program. This would be a way to see what goes on, you know? What is it like on patrol?
I remember when I was in the department, we had, one of the selectmen always would ask, he wrote to me a couple of times, yeah.
Select one or two?
No.
No. I haven't seen a selectman.
Nope.
I've been asked to go and ride, but no, it's a ride-along.
Hey.
I'm talking about for the police.
Can you imagine if I said that? Holy smokes, you'd hit me.
I don't go and ride.
You guys wanna do anything with this?
I'm fine with the intern program. I'm a little leery about the ride-along. I guess I don't, I don't get it, so I'm, I'm fine with the intern program. I just feel like there's inherent risk for the ride-along. I mean, Joe Schmo could call you tomorrow and say, I wanna go ride-along and I don't, I don't understand that. I don't know.
There is a vetting process though, even for the ride-along.
Okay.
I bet you, if you asked, they'd let you ride.
The only positive, well, not the only positive, but one of the big positives that I see for the ride-along program is community relations with the police, police department. Unfortunately, nature... Unfortunately, nationwide, I'm not saying Freetown, but nationwide, the community relationship with the law enforcement community is at an all-time low, and anything that I see can help improve that relationship would be a positive, as long as all inherited risks are mitigated to the best of our ability.
And we try to do that.
I understand you do, I, I read you a well-put-together-
Yeah, I mean, I, it's a personal thing for me. I'm, I'm not saying I would vote no to it, I'm just saying it's a personal, I don't get it, so I just, I understand the basis for it, I just, I just feel like-
Something that's personally-
It's, yeah, it's like, it's like almost like, I don't know, there are things in that department that shouldn't be exposed, I guess, and I, and I feel like there's inherent risk, I just, you know, and-
And, and that's why we would assign the person to a field training officer so that the FTOs understand and, understand that.
All right, so what are the next steps? What do you need from the board?
I think I just need the approval of the board and then everything will be put into place.
I'll make the motion to approve both intern program and the ride-along program.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also would like a report back, like maybe within six months, to find out exactly where we are with both programs.
Okay.
Okay.
That'll be simple enough.
Can I make that as a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we have a report back within six months to see exactly how the, how those programs are working.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ally, you got both of those?
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Don't leave, you got another one. You have a, the chief of, the chief of police had requested that he utilized a folder that's assigned to the town hall to assist him in, in scanning and archiving important police papers so we can get rid of the big boxes and the storage and all of that stuff. Can you explain it?
Yes, I can. So the secretary of public records allows municipalities to scan records and keep them in electronic format as long as it's done in accordance with, with the retention schedule, and there are certain forms to be filled out and sent up to public records for their approval. We have a record management system in which officers write their reports and they're recorded electronically. What we'd like to do is take all of the, the ancillary paperwork, whether it's a registry certification, a victim statement, a stolen article list, et cetera, and we would like to scan those and then attach them to the electronic report. So at any point in the future, when an officer sits at the computer and brings up the report, not only does he or she have the actual report, but all of these other attachments are immediately Once we accomplish all of this, it'll be very efficient, it'll be backed up electronically as well, but it'll provide some convenience for us. Instead of having to go out to the container in the middle of winter, et cetera, we'll be able to access these records right at the, right, you know, right at the PC. It is not uncommon for us to get records requests that go back to the seventies and eighties. We get requests from the House of Correction, we get requests from the Sex Offender Registry Board, we get requests from other police agencies. We actually have to go out there, find, find the report, sometimes we have to refoto copy it because of the condition of the paperwork, so we're trying to avoid that, we're trying to, you know, also save space by, you know, scanning all of these things into electronic format. Coming full circle, the, the floater would help us do that. The floater, whether it's an hour a week or two hours a week, would be tasked with going out, getting, getting the reports, looking through them, discarding the, the irrelevant materials, scanning the relevant, and, you know, identifying what those documents are in our record management system. I think maybe about an hour or two's worth of, of training would orient the floater to what we actually need. Now, this program isn't something that we need the floater every single day or at a specific time. It, it certainly can work around the needs of the town hall, you know? If the floater's scheduled to come up to the police station, but there's somebody sick in the town hall or on vacation, well, you know, we understand we have to defer, you know, to the town hall. But I think having the floater allocate time for us, you know, we'll begin to make a dent in some of those records.
We have an internal position, it's one of those, that's funny, but not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, what is Tim doing now? He's got to do, he said he's up.
Yeah, he's very busy.
Do you have time?
Like, I can sign them up there.
She has, she has, she does have time, because I spoke to Ally this morning.
No, that's fine, and you can use, I think you can use-
Just, just one other point, I think Tim, would you describe him as a confidential secretary?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, the question I was going to ask, are they going to be dealing with confidential material?
Yeah, they, they will.
Is there anything they would have to sign or?
Yes, I have a confidentiality agreement that the person can sign.
And they're not going to be destroying anything in your evidence lockers or anything like that?
Won't have any, any access to-
Ancillary, ancillary, I should say, ancillary paperwork.
Yeah, no, no access to evidence.
Tim's a very trustworthy employee, so I don't have no issues with that at all.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, I don't think you need a motion, I think you just have to schedule the time with that.
You mentioned discarding some unnecessary records, now there's, now who's going to make that judgment?
Well, he's, during his orientation, he'll be giving a, a list of, you know, a multiple, a multiple, you know, whether it's registry documents, witness statements, very, very long list, and he'll be oriented to identify which documents fall in which of, one of those categories. Once he scans those documents in, there's, there's a shredder and he'll be charged with, A, making sure that the documents have been properly scanned in, and B, making sure that they're shredded.
Okay. And, but you or someone else in the department?
I'm going to sit down with him and orient.
Okay. But before anything is shredded, shredded, there will be someone else that looks at?
Well, I, you know, we can work in a safe, a safe guy, where he can list all of the reports he worked on that day and then we can go in and double-check to make sure that they have been attached correctly and then give the green light for the, for the stuff that is, you know, shredded.
Okay.
So you're just going to go with Ally?
Yeah, I think that's what you-
Yeah.
That's good for everybody.
Time with Ally.
Yes.
All right.
Thanks, Carlton.
Thanks, Carlton. All right, the next thing is a, a vote on seasonal population, for seasonal population form for Massachusetts Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Now, this is a new form that the A U D C C is requiring the towns to fill out annually. They're just asking the towns for, for what the population increase that, that may occur or occurs in the summer months. And Ally has a note here that Freetown doesn't have an increase because we don't have any summer places. So we're good to have her complete that?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess we have to sign that, correct?
You have to take a vote.
So that's in the-
Take a vote.
You have to take a vote that it doesn't increase.
Motion to, motion to endorse, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, that's done. Okay, Jack, tell us about MCCAM.
Well, MCCAM is, is the cable group in Middleborough that processes and runs the cable shows on the film right now. And you contract with them each year to perform those services, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. Five-year contract.
Five-year.
Yes.
Do we hold that for the next meeting? I want to review it a little bit more.
Sure. Anybody else want to hold it for the next meeting?
I have a little problem.
I want to, I just want to read it.
It's five thousand a year.
Five thousand?
Five thousand a year, it's twenty-five hundred twice a year.
Yeah, I want to roll devil.
Yeah, I want to hold that.
Okay. All right, the next thing on, we're going to hold that, Ally for the next agenda?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we have a reserve fund transfer for, for four thousand dollars to pay for services performed by Spinnick Technical Installation of the New Server and all, and moving all the directories and everything else for the, the system that had failed at the town hall. Luckily, we were able to capture all our data and so forth, but there's not enough money in the account, so we'll be looking for a four thousand dollar transfer from the Finance Committee this, I think tonight.
Yes.
Since they're all going to be here, does the board want to approve this so we can pass it on or not?
So there's twenty-eight eighty-three in that account now, right?
Yes.
So what is that money going to be used for from now until the end of the year? Do we know anything? Are they going to ask, I'm sure Finance is going to ask.
Ally.
Is that money allocated already?
The twenty-eight eighty-three, that's already earmarked.
Yeah, it's already spent. Charlie's bill is four thousand dollars, so we've got to pay Charlie, plus we've got to pay Comcast for the rest of the year.
We got to pay-
So six hundred ninety-eight dollars for the rest of the year.
Yeah.
Okay. Plus whatever Charlie might have to do for the rest of the year.
Well, and we haven't got the, we're still waiting for the backup, right? Hasn't, the backup-
The backup came in.
Oh, it did come in.
Yeah, he put it in over the weekend.
Okay, all right, but that would be in this year.
So we haven't gotten that bill yet.
Okay, finally came in from, from-
I'll make a motion to send the four thousand dollars to, to the Finance Committee.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, it, to send it to the Finance Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye, also, if you want, if you want to be the department head there.
Sure.
All right, the next thing on the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the abatements for the month of January twenty-seventeen estimated by Chief Sylvia in the amount of forty-three thousand nine twenty-four ninety-nine.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the abatements for the month of November twenty-fifteen estimated by the Chief Sylvia in the amount of thirteen thousand eight ninety-eight fifty-nine.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let me see, today is what, that's right?
Mm-hmm.
So we can give this to them? All right. You guys, you guys, you cross-sign this, you guys probably should sign it, you all board of the board.
Sign the one that's in the purple folder that had the attachment to it.
Okay, oh, Jack already did that one. Do you want, Kent, you want this now?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's the right thought. All right. Guys, we keep rolling along. Lauren, you're up next. Your lovely daughter is going to stay sitting back there.
She's watching like YouTube toy videos and stuff.
I hope she's watching YouTube videos of the, of the board of select-
Past selectmen's meetings, right?
No?
Living stuff there.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you for letting me come to kind of brief you. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read the packets about the DLTA funding, but it's been released finally. In the past, we've gotten it for a lot of great projects. Serpents helped us with technical assistance on our safety review bylaw and subdivision and some rights, so I don't like to leave any money on the table when DLTA comes available. They have different priority areas every time they release the money, and this year it's planning for housing, planning for growth, economic development, and the big one this year is community compact activities. So towns that have entered into a compact in the state, they've stated their commitment to certain best practices. DLTA, if they want it, can help them. For non-compact communities like Freetown, Serpents can help us in writing the application, identifying those best practice areas and getting us to be a compact community, which furthers, frees up some potential future funding for the projects. I spoke with some folks at Serpents to see what would make us a little bit competitive, more competitive, and I think, you know, since housing is such a big one, we can kind of do a two-for. We can ask for help in getting the CCC application with housing being one of those up to three best practices that we did at the time, and they can help us at both boards, planning and board of selectmen identify the other, and also get working on a draft, which I can start by a word monthly. So I want to try to ask for as much and get as much as we can. So I come to you because ultimately the board of selectmen would sign off and submit the community compact application, so I'd like us to work together to do that. So ask me for your blessing to make that request, housing production plan, if we can get it and implement it, adopt it, and some units are produced, ultimately we can have some control over any like potential 40B projects that come into town, you know, as far as the law.
Just, the community compact area, that's an attempt by the state to lower population density, oh, actually, increase population density, so more multi, multi-family, multi-family home homes.
That, that's almost like part of the compact, that's, that's some zoning reform that's separate from the compact, that, it's like it might be-
Okay. What's the overall goal of becoming a CCC community, or community compact cabinet?
There's many different categories within the compact that, you know, how, the housing production plan is just one best practice, and they're going to help us identify what, what else we might want as a town, what the board of selectmen think is a priority, you know, might not be on the radar of the planning board, so we can pick, you know, a couple other things, if it's going to work toward being a green community, education best practices in here.
Okay, so all you need from us is your, our loss to move forward, that we're looking for?
Right, if, if a compact application is going to be a piece of this, you know, we need to work together if we get funded.
But you would need that at the time of submission, not submission, correct? Or you need that now?
I'm sort of letting you know this is what we'd like to do. The application is due not for CCC, the application for DLTA funding is due the twenty-eighth. Ultimately-
Of this month.
Right, if we get funded and they, they help us to write the CCC out, then you'll want to use that.
Then you need that. So right now, you don't need anything from us.
Right.
So, well, anybody want to make a motion that we allow her to proceed under this?
No. Well, we don't need to, that's through the planning board. The planning board will submit for the DLTA, correct?
Right, but-
And then once, if we get approved, if, if the town gets approved, gets a grant, gets money from the grant, then we can apply to put it towards the CCC.
So they're going to do, I mean, the planning board is an independent body, right? So they're going to do it. You just want to know if we will support it.
We'll support the CCC out.
Right, well, you know, when it comes time.
Yeah, and the housing production plan as, as one of the best, best practices of the system.
Okay, all right, so we're good? We're good?
We're good? Okay, good, no questions?
No.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a request by Barbara Lefleur, the director of the Council on Aging. Below are the applicants that have applied and meet the criteria for a new cycle commencing November two thousand sixteen. These are two additional people for the senior work-off program, which Singleton and Morris St. Monroe.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next thing, we've already talked about, Jack talked about Mr. X, Sefaris, and I talked a little bit about that, so that's okay. And the next thing is to approve the minutes from the Board of Select, as many of January twenty-third.
Uh, one question on Mr. Xefaris's submission. Is he looking to get something back from this board? Because it kinda sounds like that in his letter.
I read the letter, I'm sure you read the letter, or Lisa read the letter. I think, uh, if you knew Mr. Xefaris, uh, it's his property, he owns the property, and we don't know what, his letter, in my opinion, isn't specific enough to tell us what he wants. And I think that's why Jack talked to him.
Yeah, well, one of the things that he's repeatedly done, every time I've talked to him, is outline several different potential future reuses of a property, um, from, um, industrial, commercial, uh, units that would be rented out, uh, to senior housing, um, and to industrial, uh, and suggested that maybe the Board or the town might wanna suggest to him what we'd like to see. And I said, "Mr. X, you know, that's, that's your, your property. If you develop a plan that you wanna carry forward, then, uh, that's the time for, for you to present it to the, the town in whatever fashion you have to do it. It's your choice, it's your property." I, I think what he's looking for more than anything is for us to work with DEP to get this thing, uh, moving again. It's pretty clear to me that, uh, that DEP has not, um, worked on this for a number of years. The tires, there are tires that remain there on the property. And this isn't the only place we've got tire issues, um, we've discovered recently. So we, we need DEP to be working actively on, on this again, and I think that would please Mr. X, you know, if the town is, uh, and we, we have been on top of that. I've been, I've, I've been over there to see, uh, Mark Dakers, the, the head of that section, on a number of occasions, uh, and, uh, he knows, he, he's assigned one of his, uh, staff to research and report back on what the status of the project is. And, um, I think he's ready, ready to get this thing rolling again. I could, kind of, that's the most we can do, uh, as far as, uh, this property is concerned. Once, uh, DEP starts taking some action to, uh, implement the decision they've already made, that F and B and the other outfit have gotta clean it up, and, um, and push them to actually get it done, then Mr. X will be happy and cleaned up. He can reuse the property.
So your conversations with him, you think that satisfied him as far as him wanting to meet with the Board and all that?
Yeah, I, I don't think...
He's wanted to...
Yeah, he wants you to know that, um, he's running out of time, as he puts it. Uh, he's in his nineties now, uh, and he's feeling as if, uh, this, this may be the last project he works on, he doesn't want it to linger.
All I wanna know...
Yeah, I don't wanna, I wanna make sure that he knows that the Board...
Yeah.
Is in receipt of his letter and what you stated. So he doesn't need anything formal written to him.
I don't, I don't think there's anything you can do for him, like, print it.
No, I, I get what you're saying, but he doesn't need a formal written explanation of what you just said sent to him, or you think...
No, I, I...
Your verbal...
I'd be more than happy to write him the letter, on behalf of the Board. Yeah.
So that seems like, that, that's what he was trying to get from us.
Yeah, that's right.
Refers to, it's been six months and still hasn't come from the Board.
Then that way it can more memorialize and, and everybody's on that same page, so that's fine.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Next thing is the approval of the Board of Select, this meeting is for January twenty-third.
I'll make a motion to move forward.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Board of Health, Mr. Joe's.
Nothing from the Board.
He never has anything.
He not never, just not...
Okay.
Next week, how's that, next meeting? There'll be, oh, a good hour dedicated to the Board.
Yeah, just like...
He's gonna talk, what are you gonna talk about next?
Excel.
Excel.
Well, that's right.
Pitchforks, fortunes.
There you go.
All right. You can give him the gavel, Mr. Chairman.
It's, it's gonna be in his hands, 'cause these are complaints to the Board of Health.
That's right.
Right.
Okay. It's all yours, Ms. Pacheco, the Chairman of the Personnel Board.
All right, um, I have a change of status here for, um, Timothy Ashley, want the service increase, um, for the Highway Department from a rate of twenty dollars and twenty-one cents to twenty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Motion made to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also for Jordan Costa, um, in the amount of twenty-twenty-one to twenty-one thirty-eight worth of service increase.
Motion to, motion to approve twenty-twenty-one to twenty-one thirty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, um, we have a letter of resignation from Denise Charlin from the Library Technician Program. She was only working here for a short time, part-time, uh, she's got a full-time job with benefits, so do I have a motion to accept her letter of resignation?
Motion read.
I'll second with the, um, sending a letter...
I'm gonna do everything else first and then you, okay? Instead of going back and forth.
Sending a letter for thanking her for her time.
She, she actually, uh...
She's really nice, very nice lady, and it was a...
She got a full-time job, you missed my life, right?
Awesome for her. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, also to appoint Terrence Wood, uh, Wood, uh, Wood Waldorf, sorry, my voice, and Carol to the Parade and Fireworks Committee, as submitted by Judy Gregory, effective, um, tonight, February sixth, twenty-seventeen.
Motion read, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One more, no, you're not.
All right.
I wanna discuss, um, the van drivers with, um, Barbara and the COA, members of the COA. So do you wanna tell them a little bit of background of what, what was happening?
Well, actually, one driver, as you know, is gone for a short period of time. Um, we have another, the other driver, um, they actually have to leave for an extended amount of time, so that leaves what we consider the alternate driver driving. Um, I know that they are not gonna be out, I believe it's March twenty-fourth, is when they will be out, I'm not sure of the timeframe, so it's, okay, do we have, say, both of the part-timers, how do, you know, help us move forward with this? Or what would be the best way to do it?
So Barbara and I have been discussing some things, and, um, one of the suggestions was maybe the, um, van coordinator from the school would have a backup. So she doesn't have any backups right now, but if she does have backups, she would certainly send those names forward. But I think that to be in this position and, and to not know if you're gonna have a van driver available or not, it puts everybody at risk, that I think that she should have some sort of, um, backup plan to maybe have those people, substitutes, add to our list on call.
Do you have substitutes ready to go?
I don't have any at all. Um, there's certain training that has to be done through the state for this, so that's why I'm asking how, what is the best way you'd like me to move forward with this?
Well, certainly you need to put it on, online, you know, on the, on the website. Um, I will call around to other COAs and see if they have a list of those people, you know, that may be on their substitute list as well, so then that way you can bring them forward.
Okay, I do have one that actually came into my office, who had put her on the Senior Workoff Program. She actually retired from the school as a driver. So she actually came in and said, "Do you have anything to do with, you know, for driving?" I didn't know if that would be somebody we could actually, which there is a training next week, that could put her behind the wheel if she took it. I mean, that would be up to you, you know, being on the senior program, would she be able to drive out vehicles when, if she got that training that she needed? And that way the twenty-fourth would come and we'd be covered.
Does she wanna, does she wanna be paid for, for, for driving?
Through the Workoff Program.
That's how she wants to be paid?
Yes.
I would see.
That's the hours she wants to do.
So this was another thing that we were talking about.
Yeah.
But I can't give her the okay, so...
I'll, I'll make a motion that, as long as the individual...
I have a question. I'm Chairman of the COA Board. If that doesn't work out, do we post for a position of alternate driver?
I would post that anyway.
Anyway.
Um, because you don't know, you may want, you might wanna have two backups, you know, you, you just never know what's gonna happen. Um, I would definitely, I think the more, the better off, but I think certainly that you should definitely post for another one anyway.
So do you wanna motion on the person that wants to do on this? I'll make the motion that whoever that person is for the Senior Workoff Program, if she takes the course, she's already has experience driving, uh, that we allow that to proceed.
What's the person's name?
Deborah White, I believe.
I'll make, I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Do we need a motion to, to post it?
Yeah, let's put a motion on, on to post for a senior, um, van driver.
Alternate, right?
Alternate.
I'll, I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I make one statement? It's a flag that actually flew over Afghanistan, it was a gift from Kwanzaa, um, the national god, to us. I thought you might wanna know that. I'm proud of it.
Yeah.
I think it was in the kitchen.
Yes, it was.
That's right. It was in the kitchen, it's a little heavy. You guys were in the kitchen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We still have to go into executive practice, that's the problem. It's just minutes, right?
What am I doing over here? You know what I'm doing over here? I'm gonna get beat up by the selectmen.
You already tasting the wrong side of the table?
Huh?
Yeah, recusing myself, girl.
That's right, that's why I'm over here, I'm recu- recusing myself from any further discussions on the personnel for the time being.
Oh, let's keep talking.
There we go. I knew this was gonna be a string.
You're filibustering.
Oh, boy.
Filibustering, there you go.
That's funny.
Filibustering me.
Okay, hold on.
Uh, we should have the chief.
You want him, what we call?
No.
What do you want to talk about?
We gotta discuss this application.
I know that.
So did you see the game last night?
I did, it was really awesome. I was like, I couldn't believe it, it was unbelievable.
I knew the effort, I knew the effort.
Can you read it?
No, I got it. So, um, Mr. Sadik is recusing himself, um, at this time, and leaving it up to the other two members of the Board to decide his fate. Well, you love us, Paul. So he's writing, "I, being a member of the Massachusetts Bar in good standing for the past twenty-four years and being a resident of the applicant's hometown of Freetown, do state upon honor that this applicant is personally known to me and reviewed this application and believe that the statements are to be true," are to be true, sorry.
I, look, she said "are" to me.
It's not, but I didn't say that, but I just wanted to clarify. "And that the applicant is a person of good moral character," oh!
And reputation.
"And reputation and competent to perform the duties of a constable." I love you, Paul. Um, so these members, um...
That was signed by the chief, right?
Signed by the, uh, Chief and, um, Cosn Abbott, as well as, um, some citizens, um, Gary Sylvia, Walter Sawicki, Robert Popper, and Lee von Gartner. Um, in essence, um, Paul, um, is asking that we, um, have him be a constable for the town of Freetown for both criminal and civil processes on that, on behalf of the town. And he is leaving it up to us to vote in favor of that, and he has, uh, talked to Town Council, um, he has written the necessary forms and, and has that, um, available, uh...
It was filed with the Board.
With the Town Clark, right? And, um...
Just to point out, it was a Form twenty-D that you filed with the Town Clark.
Yes, and, um, you have, if you choose to, uh, to approve the exemption under the Form twenty-D, there's a form for you guys to sign, and then you can, if you choose to appoint me as a constable, and if you want, I, I, I'm, you know, I'm not running for reelection, and, uh, I, I spent thirty-five years working as a reserve police officer here in the town, and seventeen years as treasurer, so, and I know the last six years as selectman, but that could be a little questionable, but, uh, I just, I just wanna say, I have no desire, I have no desire to work for police department, anything else, I, I just wanna continue to have some law enforcement and, and serve if God needs something, um, criminal process or, or...
That's the only reason. Um, now, you have, we have an opinion, the Board has an opinion from the, from Town Council about, um, the appointment of Mr. Sadik as constable?
Yes, and he had the, he, um, made suggestions, um, that he do the, the proper form, um, recuse himself, which he's done tonight, and, um, everything seems to be in order.
The other thing too is that, is that, I'm gonna, I still have, what, two months to go as selectman, if, if a, if somebody came in to, if there was an appointment request from another constable, I could not partake in it, which I understand.
Would you, um, would you be against the, um, your start date being April first, two thousand seventeen? So there is no overlap between your selectman duties and your constable duty?
I have no problem with that, but it wouldn't be April first, it would be April third.
Okay, April third.
But, and I, I actually asked that to Mark Rich, and he says, "No, there's no issue because you took Paul..."
No, I understand that.
Okay, whatever you guys wanna do is fine with me.
I mean, you're only talking about two months.
Yeah. Doesn't matter to me.
All right, so do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we, um, appoint Paul Gi-Sadik to Constable, both civil and criminal, effective April third, two thousand seventeen.
What does a G stand for?
George.
Paul.
George, see, my grandfather's name on my father's side.
Thanks. Um, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Ooh!
I know, I didn't say that, I'm so used to it. Scratch that, kill that tape.
All that recusal, there it goes.
I'm so damn used to it, at least he did it last. There you go. No, thank you, thank you.
All right, you can take that back here now.
All right.
Wanna sign this?
No. Come on, it's bad enough I opened my mouth.
You can say that again.
Saying it for you. More snow pants?
Yeah, I, I, we gotta, is there like a cutoff for that? 'Cause then how do you decide for who you call or who you don't call?
Sure's a problem.
It's a real thing, isn't it?
No?
Oh, we have to endorse the twenty-D, or is that part of the, um, is that part of the application that he...
But I think you do that, so if we're gonna get out of here.
Oh, it's in his packet, hold on.
Walt's here refused, um, make a motion to sign the twenty-D, uh, special employee exemption form. Why about the...
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, 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 okay.
Got it?
Are we done with everything?
Yes.
Yes. There's a candidate for Jack's program.
I tried, I wanted to check this one. All right, we're good.
You're done? Okay. Uh, next thing?
That's it.
New business?
No new business.
The only new business is just our Board of Directors, uh, Board of Select, this meeting, right, the twenty-first?
Yeah, twenty-first, and, well, we have new dates, right? You have dates on here.
Yeah.
Uh, March third, is that the date we had put aside for reviewing something? We're supposed to have something from March third.
March third?
Was that part of the...
I didn't bring my book tonight, so I'm a little...
March third is a Friday.
March third is a Friday.
Oh, well, no, I'm sorry, March, March sixth.
March sixth, we got...
You have a meeting on here for March 6th?
Board of Selectmen's meeting.
March 6th.
Was there anything else for that meeting that was supposed to be from either budget or something? Because I thought there was.
I would think he was probably.
The school's not coming back that day or anything, right?
The 21st is budgeted at five.
That's with Lakeville?
February 21st, but March 6th, we didn't have.
So I might not be at that meeting depending, I have to go, I have to fly a flower off of the meeting.
You guys have to decide on budget schedule tonight, but.
No, I'm not that kind of guy.
So, so we're going to meet, I got, I get the 21st that we're meeting with Lakeville at 5:00?
Yeah.
Yes, here.
Here.
Well, it's going to be a heck of a meeting. Lakeville and Excel on the same night?
Well, that's awful.
Well, yeah, because Lakeville starts at 5:00 and Excel starts at 6:00, well, our regular meeting starts at 6:00. And what was, then, we haven't set, we haven't.
No, we'll talk about that tonight, a budget timeline.
Come back, that's all.
Okay, okay, I thought we already had something here.
All right.
And as in that now, that we're supposed to talk about upcoming meetings or something?
Yeah, but after we sit down, we go over the budget, right?
You have to decide who you call back in.
Right, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the town. Hall, library, highway union, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the so, and the chair, so declares.
I think he's supposed to read that, but I'm.
It doesn't matter, I made the motion.
Second.
No, I made the motion.
Oh, I made the motion.
Lisa made the motion, while Joe's second in it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sadik, yes, so we're going into executive session.
And we will return.
We will be coming back to, uh, open session to talk about budgets and anything else that may arise from our executive. The plan today, and correct me if I'm wrong, my two cohorts here, is to run down the department's requests. And this is our plan, run down the department's request and pick out any department that we want to see because of something. It could be that they increased more than we expected, or it's too high, or we want to talk. So everybody, I would assume they have an opportunity to look at these things since we got on Thursday. You want me to go down and call the department each?
Yeah, just go down.
Mawn Raider is requesting $420. Selectmen is requesting $82,786. And if I don't say anything else, it's because any slight increase of contractual issues, right? County Administrator is requesting $182,545,20. That is, in addition to contractual stuff, that is an additional amount of money because Mr. Healy, who was only working part-time, his last day is June 22nd. And I believe, I believe the board will have to, at some point, have to put out a request, an opening for county administrators. So county administrators' salaries are usually up around, I don't know, 10,000, 12,000, 15,000.
I, as you can see, I put a line in there for 125. So we'll be talking about that. But I, I was budgeted, because it's 60.
Yep.
So that's 65,000 additional dollars.
So we're going to take that department and talk about that and leave it there, correct?
Yeah.
All right. The next one is Finance Committee, no change, $1,500. Guys, good, you guys don't even have contractual increases, do you?
We don't put in for that yet, I don't know what's going on here.
They don't get paid. All right, Town Accountant?
Oh, that was a joke.
Yeah, that was a joke.
Reserve.
Oh, Reserve Fund, up by $10,000, going from 121,354,17. You going to hold on that?
It's, it's not actually up, it's when you look at what is in last year, it gets reduced as it's used, it's already been used.
For 121, we have spent some.
So it's level funded?
So it's level funded?
Yeah, so it's just the appropriation gets reduced when items are pulled out to fund other departments. So it is level funded, that's, it is level funded from the past two years.
So it's level funded at what about?
131,395 is level funded.
I, I read the note, is that, you can send it to me, okay?
Those, those reduced numbers are reflecting what's been spent out of.
You don't actually spend out of the reserve fund, the appropriation gets moved to the department that needs to spend the money.
That's why the budget figure at the date has dropped down from 131.
Let's go 131.
We've already allocated.
Like, if we, if we funded every year at 120, then this year it should be 120, not 131.
It was, it was up to 130.
So whatever it is, whatever the number we decide.
It was 131, it was this year, 131,37, uh, 395, that's what it was funded for, this one year is 17.
An odd number like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just doesn't.
I'm going to hold it anyway, because I'm going to go back to my notes and look at it.
Kim, what was the? Nothing makes a difference really. This is 6395. We had the 125 for a long time, we added the 6395?
Right, for personnel, we just identified it as personnel. So 125 is for your regular, 6395 was additional amount that was added for personnel.
What, did somebody run show it, it'd be on the personnel cards?
But that was for, but that was for a reason though, correct? The 63, well, we'll discuss it, because right now it's not going to make any sense to talk about it, so we're going to hold on.
Okay. Town Accountant, 108,561. That's contractual increases and $1,001, uh, and 5, and I guess it's all contractual increases, right?
Yeah, it's a full year for me, uh, at 78, and then CBA for Pam, 510.
That's fine, okay. Assessors?
Hold.
Assessors hold.
You got Town Audit, your first.
Oh, Town Audit, 195, same thing.
Hold on the assessors?
Yeah, I got hold on the assessors. Town Treasurer? $616 more for postage? And nothing, nothing for her, her.
No contractual, no.
Well, no, what?
There's more money in the budget.
And there was another money. Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's because of the prior situation.
Because we, no, because we funded more positions in the, so we probably should put a hold on it, because we probably take money out of that if we need to.
And what can we reduce, of course?
Because last year they wanted to add an extra person, and we all said no, but they kept the money in there, so we, that might be, we take money out of that.
Actually, they kept that money in there.
No, we kept, I think we kept most of it in there. Anyway, we'll put a hold on it.
Yeah, I'll have to look.
Legal is up by, what, 35,000?
Yep.
Put a hold on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, we, our legal is pretty high, but that's okay, we'll put a hold on that. Management Information Systems, increase of $6,990 for data cloud and $7,170 for replacement equipment, that's the increase.
So we have a five-year plan for that? It was somewhere.
If there was a five-year plan, we would have had the money for the shovel.
Right, but that went, but there was a, remember, you asked for a plan, there was one somewhere, Win, Win.
Win?
Win.
Win?
Win had it.
I never even worked with Win. So that means.
Oh, Richard, it was Richard, it was Richard.
Richard?
Yeah. So, anyway.
Right, and this 7,000 is additional, put all what we just approved? That's your?
Well, the cloud, isn't the cloud that?
The cloud is 60.
The cloud is 6,900, and then we just, the replacement equipment, we got more, put in three points?
Yeah, we should just put a hold on it.
Okay, all right, good, good.
Okay. Tax Title Foreclosure, the same as last year, $15,500. Town Clerk, 106,079,28. That's up to 92,152. This is the Town Clerk, I guess the Town Clerk is looking for an increase of $2,580. And then there's possible motion for show for assisting the Town Clerk.
That's a plus, so put a hold on that.
Okay. All right, the next thing is the elections, primaries and elections, that's down from 18 to 6. And that's always regulated by what we have in the election. The registrar is $5,733, that's down a few bars. Conservation Commission, it's up $1,779. 120 is CBA from Mike, and using 500, 500, 500 less from NOI account for a couple weeks. I don't know what NOI account is.
It's a notice of intent account, there's a fee that's paid when folks need to go before conservation for certain issues and the money can be used for wetlands activities. And they're advocating to use less of their fund to cover additional, to cover time for sellers.
The biggest thing is, is $1,159 for Portage John vehicles over at, I guess, Port of Passus in the Sonoma off of Grant Dean Road.
I didn't, I didn't hear that, Paul, would you say it was, what was it for Port?
Portage Johns. You don't have a copy of this?
Yeah, actually I do, I didn't, I didn't bring it.
Portage Johns.
And the Portage Johns are for the?
Beachcocks.
illegals?
Portage Johns are there for any member of the public that wants to have to go to the bathroom.
I didn't, I know what a Portage John is.
Beachcocks, it's open.
Have we had, I'm just curious, have we had Portage, Portage bodies down there in previous years?
I, I think we do have.
I don't think, I, I can't answer that for sure. I usually go traveling once a year, and I've never seen, again, I've never seen one down there, I just don't.
Put a hold on that.
Okay.
All right, Planning Board, $4,000 increase, it's at 52,754,58. CBA increase of $879 for lawn and an additional, and $500 increase for the longevity. Apparently this is the year that they kicked up. Increase of $2,629 for the cost to produce and send newsletters following town meetings. That, that's.
Is that new?
That's new, right?
That's new, what that is, is we do zoning changes in town meetings, both, really now. And people that are affected don't get notified necessarily, so this is to send to any businesses or anything that's changed in that area to let them know, hey, there's been a zoning change, make sure you're complying with the new zoning. And we just had an issue in a sonnet where something was done and it was, the only didn't know about the zoning change. And that was, that's what, we have a genesis for this.
Shouldn't that newsletter be sent out previous to meetings, so if somebody has a problem, they can come?
Well, it's all, they're all advertised and anybody could come to the meetings. If this is just specifically for people that.
Well, I know, but you're sending out a newsletter after the fact.
Yes, saying that this is, this changed.
Newsletter, this is what we propose.
It's to inform them that this changes and it's now affecting you.
That's my point, my point is that if it was sent out previous, this is.
They may not accept that.
Oh, yeah. It may not pass, so we need to know. If it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, but if you sent it out and somebody, that might be the reason if somebody was informed, that might be the reason it didn't pass or did pass. But if you get the information out there, if you're going to send newsletters out anyway, why not send it out before the meeting to inform people this may be what we're going to do?
Because that would be more the responsibility of the board's selectmen than it would the planning board. The planning board would send them a letter, if it passes, this is, this is what your criteria is. If you want us to send a letter to every household and let them know, this is the town meeting warrant and that's what it is, it's going to be a lot more than 26, 29.
Well, the newsletter is going to go, isn't going to go to the entire town, correct?
No, only the people that are affected by the zoning change that get changed.
Why can't you send a pre, a, a pre-letter?
Because you have terrible, horrible zone.
A small amount of people.
That's up to planning.
Okay, I, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there, just that in my mind, it makes, makes more sense to inform somebody before the meeting than to shock them after the meeting, oh, by the way, you were in Florida, but immediately passed this, so now you have to be compliant. Well.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So I'm just saying, to my mind, I would like to be, personally, I would like to be informed before and after.
You all set?
Yeah.
Okay, we're not holding that.
If you guys want, if the finance committee wants to hold it, it's fine.
It's not the money, it's the procedure.
Yeah, and that's tomorrow night, the planning board. Planning board meeting tomorrow night, so if you want to bring it up to them, the planning board meeting, then absolutely.
So any more of the appeals?
This is just because, it was, like I said, the genesis of this was, it was an incident, people weren't informed, they don't even live in town, the people, so they wouldn't even vote anyhow because it was a business.
Yeah.
They're not conforming.
CBA, it's gone down. Soil Board, stayed the same, 1,100 bucks. Public Buildings and Property Maintenance, that's dropped significantly from 212,000 to 89,000.
Big part of that was the net metering credit, the fact that the contract has been amended so that we don't longer have to upfront demand that money and then wait for the money coming back.
So that's why it's more in line with the priority, actually it's lower than the 16 year, right? Okay, so we don't have to hold that, I don't think. Property Insurance, 2.5% increase based on a two-year contract. That went up from 95,000 to 97,000. Town Report, still the same, 3,500. And Department Hazmat Assessment, 2,455, that must be the actual amount that we trade.
Yes.
All right. Going on to the next one, Police Department Budget. The Police Department Budget goes from 1,911,644 to 1,941,034. That is a increase because of, the police chief's contract goes up, $1,889. The CBA wage increase, $26,709. Longevity increase for one or two people, I guess, that $700 total. And sick leave incentive, 600 bucks. Also, there's an additional $4,000 increase in the budget for matching funds for a canine grant. And I, I would assume that we're probably going to hold on that and have the police chief come in and talk to us about that $4,000.
It should be a warrant also.
Well, I guess we can tell them that's.
Should it be?
Maybe off separate, for a separate warrant?
Yeah.
Separate warrant for that?
Yeah.
Otherwise, if they don't get that, then that $4,000, they're not going to stay in that budget.
Well, that's the matching possibility, we need, yeah, okay.
And they spend that on debts.
Okay.
So that's a hold.
All right, so the Police Department is on hold. Communications, basically it's $561 more than last year because of the CBA increase. I don't think you want to believe that, right? Fire Department, Fire Department's going from 1,128,639 to 1,183,967. The CBA increase for the, for overtime comes to $2,304. For regular personnel, the CBA increase is $18,041. And retirement, sick time buyback for Cliff Coden, who is retiring, is $27,018. That's a big chunk of change. And there's also an increase for medical billing, $8,000 for a full year. So we went, the Fire Department went into medical billing this year, and I think just happened, right?
Six months, yeah, it starts Jan, started January.
So this is for the whole thing, yeah. All right, so we want to hold on to that?
It's all CBA increase, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And there's a buyback, you can't.
You can't do anything about it, so that's okay, right? We're all set, we're going to do it, that's great. Building Department, Building Department goes from 99,993 to 100,495. It's $335 CBA increase and $167 buy lot increase. That must be for the building inspector. And Gas, purchase of gas, still the same, $10,080.
Isn't that the gas inspector?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, what did I say, purchase of gas?
Well, that comes in late or something.
I know, yeah, I'm sorry. Plumbing, Plumbing Inspector, $7,580, same thing. Weights and Measures, $4,000, that's the guy who sealed up Weights and Measures. Electrical Inspectors, $40,000, same as last. Civil Defense, same as last year, $19,639. Animal Control Officer. That's the same.
I have a question, Jeff, do we still have as many? I have a question. Jack, do we still have as many solar things going up? I think that's why we increased the Electrical Inspector. Do we have as much solar?
We have, yeah, there are four current, there are four in operation, done.
Right, done.
And four more.
Four more on?
Various stages of being built.
Okay.
We're not counting, not counting the homeowners?
No, no, yeah.
That's why the big increase is on this year.
This was to fund the homeowners with three inspections paid.
Right, and, and these are the big, these are the big ones, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know if the homeowners are topped off because they keep trying to sell it.
No. No, there's not, there's going to be a big increase in the coming year, next two years.
For homeowners?
Well, yeah, there's two, two companies that are coming into Massachusetts that are, that are really going to be pushing.
All right, Animal Control, same month as last year.
Everybody's the same.
Isn't there a CBA for her?
She's a bylaw.
Oh, that's right.
She's not at a point where she's moving up.
Okay. All right, and then Forestry, it's the same.
He's in movement with LNO.
He's going up a dollar an hour or so. But, I mean, there's no increase in the salary. I guess it's going to be absorbed?
He's going to work less hours, it sounds like.
Yeah, he's going to work less hours. Harbor Master, Harbor Master, that's the greatest job in the...
Who is the Harbor Master?
Mark Joe's. No relationship for Bob.
Actually, there is Michael.
His brother. He's been Harbor Master.
Been Harbor Master for like thirty years.
All right, what's he doing with all that money?
A hundred dollars.
I don't, does he even take it?
No, it's...
It's for expenses.
Paul, he's just spending it. And Paul was...
How do you ask for a...
And Paul, who's, why was he assisting him?
If you're out there running around.
He was the assistant.
Yeah, he's like, supply.
All right. School Stipends for our, for our school committee, same amount, four thousand four twenty-four. Regional School Assessment, ten, ten million, four twenty-four, seven sixty-six. Up from nine million five oh seven, five thirty-six.
We've kind of got to look at all of that. I think that's an automatic.
That might give up.
I, I dare say, yes.
You think?
Bristol County Agricultural School, going up by...
Well, that's just an estimate. I really don't know.
We don't know how many people, what the cost is, okay. And the same thing for Old Colony. That's just an estimate also.
How many students, Ian?
Didn't you say it was forty or less?
Ninety-two Old Colony.
Ninety-two?
Yeah, ninety-two Old Colony, but Bristol Community.
I mean, that's what it was as of all.
Yeah, that's what the school department, I think, holds for ninety-two, I think.
Didn't the superintendent say it was going, there was like forty less students going?
There were forty less that applied to vocational.
Right.
And with, like Lisa's point the other day, is that they were going to take whatever they could to get us back to our ninety. I thought the number was ninety, not ninety-two.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I asked.
Came up to ninety-two a few years ago.
It was at ninety-six and it went to ninety-two. It should stay at ninety-two. But there are fewer applications going out right now. But it doesn't matter because Old Colony's going to keep at ninety-two.
Well, that was for the both schools. I thought, how many do we have at Bristol County Agri, Bristol Agri? Do you know a family?
Probably like five or six.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, we're looking at both those anyway. At some time, we'll get a print number, so, okay.
All right, Highway and Streets, going from four seventy-one, eight sixty-three down to four fifty-one, nine twenty-three. It's, it's a significant reduction, but I think it's because we had an employee retire and a new guy came on at a low rate. And that also includes the, the CBA and also includes a five percent increase for the Highway Survey that I can see is going to be looking for.
Okay, hold.
Five percent?
That's what he says, yeah.
Huh?
That's what he put down for himself.
I don't think he took any last year, but I, you know, we'll, we'll discuss that.
He didn't have one last year. All right, we're going to hold that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to hold that.
Okay. Snow and Ice renewal, it's crazy, the budget, a hundred thousand dollars. And we're already over.
I remember him saying years past, if he goes up, he can't go back down, so.
All right, so streetlights going down. Somebody must have shot out a few streetlights.
Please do.
There's one or another.
Ten thousand.
Yeah, they probably should have.
One or two.
Had they switched the LED? They, they're not switching the LED.
They don't, sounds just going dark, light by light?
They'll let us switch.
My neighborhood seems dark, but...
No, part of the increase in seventeen is the net metering.
See that? It's a good thing she's here.
That's why she's here.
All right, so we went back almost a year before that. That's all right.
All right. The next thing is, uh, trash collection, five hundred fourteen thousand five oh eight. That's up by nine thousand and full year at Crayford Hill, which is thirteen seven. Because we didn't have a full year last year at Crayford Hill. Transfer Station, one hundred sixty-five thousand five thirty-six compared to one fifty-seven, one forty-two. Two thousand twenty-five dollars of CBA increases for two employees and one thousand eight seventy-five for part-time fully recovered for free town...
For the full-time person when they're out, so that they don't have to shut down.
Okay. And four percent increase from Woodward and Current when they take away the containers, I think.
No, that's the one.
That monitors, well monitors.
Oh, is that the guy that takes the sample?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you, anybody want to go with that? Good. Cemetery is twenty-three thousand one fifty-five, the same as last year. Health Inspections, Health Department, actually, ninety-six thousand five forty-four compared to ninety-five, eight seventy-six. It's an increase of one thirty-three for, I guess, the health agent and CBA increase of three thirty-five. That was, I would imagine, is a portion for maybe. Included vehicle repair and maintenance of two hundred dollars.
That's a car that's getting old. That car is really getting old. That's an old cruiser that was, that's, that's an older.
Yeah, it seems to drive all right. Council Agent, a hundred, a hundred sixty-one thousand nine nineteen compared to one thirty-seven, eight twenty-two. Add sixteen hours for an employee, sixteen thousand three ten. Previous funding with a grant, bylaw and CBA increase of two thousand seven thirty-five.
Whole.
Whole, yes. But what is the increase of twenty-five hundred in, for due, okay, an increase in energy, twenty-three hundred?
Yeah, just, I don't know.
The whole thing is whole, right? So in other words, one of the employees was being paid by, right?
The employee is currently being paid by a grant. I do not understand why they are now asking for it in the operating budget. And they're also asking for everything else that they used to pay with that grant. Now that they can't pay for it from the grant because they have the employee being paid from there, they're adding that into the budget. So I'm not quite sure what the...
They're trying to get paid employee in that hole.
So then, basically, they're, I, I'm not sure what they're looking to do.
Okay, so we're going to hold.
Yeah, I'll let them make their decision, their board of directors. I got an idea, but I don't want to misspeak and guess somebody, I'm heading on down the wrong road.
You're not on their board of directors?
No. No, I, if I was, I couldn't vote on this.
That's right.
Okay, that's why I stayed away.
Veteran Services, a hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars.
Do, do we know how much he turned in extra? Because we at one time overfunded because they were, kept running short.
We never overfunded them.
A couple, a couple of years ago, we did because it was a month, they ran out of money and the checks didn't go out and the people weren't paying their rent and all that.
Yeah.
But it wasn't, actually, it wasn't overfunded. His budget, his budget would have been completed.
Yeah, all right. I, I, all right, maybe overfunded is the wrong word, but...
You had to supplement it. Well, Kim's looking that up.
Yeah.
The next Memorial and Veterans Day.
Last year, he turned, he turned back thirty-six thousand in benefits.
Benefits that weren't expended through flying, yeah.
Yes. There, there were a few people.
Well, the problem, the problem is if somebody passes away, if somebody, you know, moves to another town, if somebody gets picked up by something else or, or somebody that's not on disability goes on disability, all of those will come back to us.
Alternative is somebody new comes in and takes a while to get services set up. That's...
We should leave it the way it is.
That, that's my thought, yeah. I was just curious as to what he turned back, if we were getting close or whatever. So we're good, I think.
All right, so Memorial and Veterans Day, twenty-two hundred dollars, the same as last year. Libraries, Libraries, going from one twenty-two, six seventy-seven to one thirty-two, sixty-four. CBA increase of one thousand four, one nine. That would be for the employees. I guess the bylaw increase for, I assume the librarian, one thousand eight thirty-six. Increase ten-hour employee to fifteen-hour employee.
No, that, that obviously didn't change because her person left. I, I'm not sure what they're doing.
But we just ordered to...
Increase the hours of one individual, somebody that's already worked there to make up the difference.
Uh, no, she left. Denise.
Is that the one you just said was doing?
You just accepted her resignation.
You just ordered to increase the hours of an employee that's already in existence. Make up the hours.
Oh, oh.
So it should offset.
So it should offset.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, is there a hold on that? Well, we can't do much about the four ninety-two for sales. That's, that's a charge.
No, but we just need to let them know what, what we're doing. So I would say hold on it and...
Because they're asking for, instead of ten, they're asking for fif, for fifteen now.
Yeah. So that's, that's a hold.
We just did ten. In fact, you're a little bit low, Jack, right? They should increase that, that employee dollars.
Yeah.
All right, White Library, five thousands, fifty-seven hundred down to fifty-three hundred. Arts and, Art Council, one thousand dollars. Same as last year. I think they got to bump up because of the good work down at the center of town. Historical Commission, going from five hundred to three thousand seven hundred.
Only if they get the flags on the east side of town.
At the different town.
To restore, who, who, who's in charge?
Who's in charge of that, I wondered?
The increase, the increase is to restore and repair windows in the village school. That's the old village school, right?
The old bu, the one on the side of the, yeah. It should be under capital improvement for buildings. It should, it should, I think, as historical commission, that's number one.
We should be holding that.
And number two, um...
We're holding that.
I, I really don't, I don't know. And we did put a new roof on there, so now I'm thinking that they want to do the windows because maybe they, they, I don't know. That's a question.
So that was, the, the roof was grant money. How much, how much, what percentage was it?
Well, we matched it. We gave, the town gave him sixty-five grand.
Yeah.
And they had a grant, sixty-five.
Right. So, anyway, it should be moved to capital repairs and we need to talk to a deposit.
Think, can we add five hundred dollars more to that, uh, so we can, so the poor people that live on the east side of town in the poor section end up with flags?
That's for the arts, cultural.
This is historical.
Oh, 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 oh. You already missed that.
Yeah, that, that's...
Oh, I thought it was historical.
The arts and cultural, they still have money in the grant, I think.
She says we have permission for five hundred more. Ally's giving us permission.
She missed that hold.
I don't mind. No, I didn't miss it. I had...
How come they didn't give us a flag?
I thought that somebody ordered them.
All right.
I was told the quality wasn't sustained and they didn't promote it.
Right, just to clarify, did the arts go up to fifteen hundred? Is that what?
Oh, I don't know.
No.
No, 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 everything's...
All right, everything's sustained. All right, okay. Do like we do, just ignore Paul. He's really already out. He's just playing a game, reading the paper.
Senior artist.
See this, see this is what happens when you get to be my age and you tell people you're not running again. They just, it's like I'm not here anymore.
It's to the side.
You know?
You realize I am a couple of months older than you, so.
Yeah, that's right. You are a couple of months older.
You know what they call having a service model, being short?
I'm short, all right. Free fireworks, three thousand?
They're the same.
Okay.
Really? Why are we, why are we doing that?
For the fun.
Huh? Where's your joy?
Don't you ever watch the fireworks?
He doesn't watch the Super Bowl. Why would you think he watches the fireworks?
I watched it once.
Well, that's in town as opposed to, well...
What's from the comfort of your own home?
Is it, is it catch, dog, right?
I promise my flash noise is over my head.
He's a flood sucker.
He hates fun, that's right. All right, let's see. Retirement debt, free town elementary.
You can't touch any of that.
You can't touch it. It's all, it has to be paid. Interest on long-term debt, that has to be paid. Interest on short-term borrowing, three thousand dollars. Got to have something in the fund, huh, in case we have to borrow.
We have a van out there right now.
I don't hear it.
Not a van, a van.
Oh, a van, V A N.
He's on fire today.
Circuit assessment, the same.
Turn it up a little, Paul.
Retirement, wow, this is a big one. Not too much we can do about it. It's going from seven hundred and ninety-five thousand to nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand. One hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar increase for Bristol County.
Hey, they got a fully fund. Time is ticking away. Interest rates are not so good.
So they're telling you what to put in?
They assess.
That's our assessment, yeah. That's our assessment. That's a big, big deal.
Many retirees.
Maybe a bonus.
As day goes by, everybody's getting all the, all right, seventy, uh, workman's coming, seventy-three thousand, one forty-nine going to eighty thousand, four sixty-four. Ten percent increase per mayor. Dollars, what the fund, okay. Unemployment benefits.
That's an estimate.
Yeah, those are estimates.
We got to find out next month what the real number is.
Yeah, because, well, we, unemployment for the town, workman's comp, that's insurance, correct?
Yeah.
Kim, it's an insurance.
Work comp is an insurance, yeah.
Unemployment benefits, we've just set that aside in case anybody does retire, because we, we fund it.
In case you lay somebody off.
In case you lay somebody off, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right. I think I'm punchy. I think I've had too much today. I'm tired about, I'm tired.
Yeah, after two hours, it's...
If you lay off the Finance Committee, how much is that going to cost you?
Nothing. And health insurance, actually, there's a meeting Wednesday, by the way.
Okay.
And the health insurance is estimated at nine percent, although, sorry, sorry, it could go up to fourteen percent.
No.
That won't happen to us. So that's a nine percent increase from one point three nine zero to one point five point five.
Maybe.
Life insurance, twelve hundred, it stays the same. Medicare, fifty-five hundred. That's because as we bring new people on, they, they become entitled, they, they get...
Well, their pay's going up. There's a percentage of your pay.
Yeah, and newer people, we bring in a covenant on the, on the, the Medicaid Act that we have to match. All right. Liability Assurance, two and a half percent increase based on two years of, of contract with guaranteed. So it's going by, from forty-five thousand to forty-seven thousand. And townwide fueling, is that the right one?
Math your gas.
That's the gas.
A hundred, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, same as the last two years was. Do we actually spend that? We don't actually spend that.
Um, I can tell you why.
I think prices have been good, but we...
Prices have been down.
We left it in case they shot back up, which we don't know.
Yeah, it probably shouldn't be before you...
Yeah, you don't know.
Interesting, see.
Um, sixty-three thousand came back last year.
Came back. All right, then what else we got? Two hundred, two hundred thousand to go into the O-Pay Liability Trust Fund.
Yeah.
That was voted by the board of selection. That takes the, we used to pay that out. You had a...
That was our court judgment deal.
When we had just moved the money.
And that was the money to fund the unfunded liability. All right. So are we, the, the only thing we held on that sheet, basically, was nothing.
Nothing.
We held nothing on that sheet.
First sheet?
Okay. What else we want to do? We have, we want to go over the sheets for the capital Okay. What else we want to go? We have, we want to go over the sheets for the capital expenditures? And we know that's going to change because we're going to need some. Is that okay? Is everyone do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got to fund it.
The new stuff. Well, everything else is old, but just want to do the new stuff.
Yeah, it's all. Let's start with the sheet that says nine thirty-one capital equipment plan. Want to start with that? All right, I'm, I'm only going to go down the year eighteen.
Yep.
Okay, these here are, on the fire department, these are existing leases, and one is for the KME pump up, which purchased in two thousand thirteen, sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Next one was for the ambulance, and that payment is fifty-nine thousand, six twenty-three. And the pickup truck, this will be the last payment for the pickup truck, eleven thousand, oh sixty-four. Now, new requests. Police chief, S, yeah, how do you spell it?
No, this is for the fire chief.
Oh, this is fire chief, okay. Fire chief, yeah, that's.
I don't know when he bought that one.
That's an old one. All right, thirty-seven thousand for his car, a new. Four pumps.
IV pumps.
IV.
Oh, IV pumps for medication, fifteen thousand, and then self-contained breathing apparatus, thirty-five thousand, and that's going to go over a three-year period, because all those, all those packs have to be replaced and updated. So for the fire department, the, the cost is twenty, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, five ninety-eight. Let's go down to the highway department, and it looks like the highway department is looking, they have one more payment on their last dump truck, twenty thousand, five sixty-five, twenty. And a new request.
No, actually, that's existing.
Yeah, because you've already paid for it once.
He got it last year.
That's right here.
He has no new requests.
He has no new requests. That should have, that should have been up further, huh? Forty-three thousand, one forty-three, so we have to pay out in eighteen for the highway, sixty-three thousand, seven oh eight, and that's all existing stuff that we're paying off. Police department, police department, one, two, three, existing leases for Dodge Charger Cruises at thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight, thirteen thousand, eight sixty-two, and thirteen thousand, three thirty-nine. And a new, a new, new Cruisers, new Cruisers, at forty-six thousand, two twenty-seven, that, that would be fifteen, that's about, that's probably three Cruisers.
Sounds like three, which we seem to be doing every year, once in a while it gets an extra one. I'm not sure why, but.
Well, he had to get an extra one because he got a new for himself, because the car he had had a leak, and it was all mil, we couldn't, couldn't ride it.
Okay.
So that's, that was, that was last year, I think.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure. It seemed like we had an extra car.
We should ask, anyway. What was that?
On the Cruisers? I think it's, yeah, you want to hold this fine. I mean, that's, I think it's three.
Deloitte, it looks like.
Yeah, Deloitte, that's the only reason why. I know, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and all other departments. Okay, this is the.
The water.
Water, they have a water truck, yeah, F three fifty.
The van we have is, is nineteen years old, can't pass inspection anymore.
Okay. So this is not just a regular van. This is a heavy-duty three fifty pickup with the enclosure, with all the, so you can put all the stuff in. There's a picture.
Is it a pickup with a utility, or is it like a van, on the idea what he's got, but bigger?
A van you can stand up and.
It's a, it's a pickup with the utility body in the back, where you can put all, you know, equipment and everything, and you can actually walk inside.
I see where it says that. That's a pickup. Okay, gotcha.
All right, that takes your, now, what else we got? We got, number nine thirty-two, capital building improvements, on the eighteen. Town hall plumbing replacement. Jack, what is that? Do you know? I, I couldn't figure that out.
Yeah, we, we need to get some plumbing replaced. Remember we had the leaks?
No. All right, so we have to get, we, we want to know what that is, right?
Yeah.
All right. That's it so far going down, right?
Fire station flooring?
Town building repairs, total thirty thousand. Fire station, flooring, ten thousand.
Which fire station?
Which fire station?
I don't know. Put a question mark next to that. Police station, twenty grand for.
Installation design limitation?
I don't know.
I don't know what that is either.
My question on that is if we're building a new one, can this like wait a year to see, if we're actually going to do the new one?
Yeah, it's a question.
We still got to do something with the.
You still have to make sure that you're not throwing, throwing that building away, could be used for another apartment.
No, that's, that's a.
You're not, you're not going to take down that building, because we know.
Not, not for, not for a long time anyway.
But we don't know what it, what it is.
Right, we don't know where it is, so we got question marks on that.
Okay.
All right, that's it, I guess, right?
And there was just one other item. I think you have a separate sheet on it, that's from the Board of Health Agent, to do property improvements at the transfer station.
Oh, this year?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I put it as part of building, even though it's not really a building, it's more just property. It's like a concrete pads for the wall containers. So there's another twenty-five thousand in that.
Excuse me, I can't, what, what was the explanation for that?
At the transfer station, where all the roll-off dumpsters go, the concrete's getting beat up, and I think you must do some repairs for that.
Container bays are in need of repair and support. Requesting to place concrete in.
At each bay.
Under each bay. This repair would eliminate water pooling and damaging containers and safety concerns.
Anybody else want to do anything else, or have we added to our list?
No, we're not going to do it. I, I would just recommend that we move the IT capital stuff into the capital budget.
And, and the historical village school?
In the historic building.
The window.
Into, the other windows into the other thing. And then what?
Was there any residual from the, the town and grant money combined?
We'll have to find out. So we just put it in there, and then we have a hold on it anyway?
I know, I know. I'm just saying if that should be, one of the things that I would be concerned about is what the.
Right. No, I agree. If there's any grant money left over, that, that should go towards that, so we have to definitely remember that.
Yeah. Any money left over? There is? Do you have any idea on that?
Uh, well, there's the, there's matching portion of the grant money, but there is article money still.
So we had, we had a match to get the grant, but they didn't, they didn't spend all the money.
Well, was it, wasn't it, there was some portion of that that was earmarked or something else, but I can't remember where it's far enough.
It might not be on this report, because it was a special report. I, I'll have to get that number for you. There is maybe two thousand. It's not very much.
That's all, okay. So maybe they even, because what they asked for for the windows isn't very, very much.
No, it's only to do a couple of windows, I think.
They must be broken. I don't want to fix those. Those are people, those in that old school. I, you know, I, I know that, I know it's a very important building.
Yeah.
And I know there's a lot of.
We spent a lot of money to do a lot of repairs because of that, though, and whatever it is we spent, and it, I don't know, it's my thought.
I don't know if we're ever going to get to use that, you know what I mean?
So there's fourteen.
What are you meaning, Matt?
Fifteen departments that we want to stay.
What do you want to do?
Yeah.
We don't want to do that on the twenty-first?
No.
Oh.
No.
Well, let's, let's make up a schedule.
Yeah, I think we should make up a schedule and then send it around, and make sure that we all agree to the schedule, but I don't want to do like five departments in one night.
I don't want to do the police, the fire, and DPDW one night.
No, I don't want to do that either.
Definitely not.
Can we?
I agree.
How about doing, if we're only going to do a couple, let's say we're going to do one big department, and then one or two small ones. Two small ones. Can we add that to the end of the selectmen's meeting, so we don't need to have, be out another night? I mean, we're certainly going to be out another night at some of them.
Yeah, but if we did, if we did do five, like, like you said, police, and then a couple of small ones.
Yeah, we could get.
And then fire, a couple of small ones.
Small ones don't, are never really small. You can say small.
You can spend a million dollars and three seconds and argue an hour for fifteen bucks.
Yeah, it's, it's small ones are not.
As long as we have the same information that you have going into the meeting, so that we can all be on the same page and we don't have to ask a lot of questions.
I think the way that Ally did it this time, if she continues doing it that way, then everybody will be on the same page. Just the ones we put on hold, if they've got those sheets, we're going to want copies. You know, like when we get into the COA, they got a bunch of these, and I'm sure others do. I think that would be helpful for us. I don't know if you guys have any, any additional you can think of on any of these? I don't know.
Other detailers, we're all looking for the same thing, I think.
Yeah.
All right, so everyone's put on hold, you'll have the detail floor.
Yeah, okay. And I personally think we should, you know, be talking with these department heads at the same time you are. That way, you might ask something we don't think of and vice versa, unless we get the same answer.
Yeah, I don't know. I haven't talked to George to find out what he wants to do. He's on vacation. When he gets back, I'll.
Do we know when he's coming back?
I know him up.
It, it might be the third or the fourth. He'll, he'd be here, let's say, the sixth of March, a month from today.
We'll probably have some of these departments already in.
Well, your only other meetings, the twenty-first, and you've just got a pile of stuff between.
When's he coming back?
Uh, beginning of March.
The sixth will be our next.
Third or fourth, somewhere in that area.
Six will be next one. We could do some on the sixth.
Yeah.
You know, you can let me know, I'll get the bean posted, and then we can run it.
Ally will let you know. Did it?
Yeah.
Want to go, Karen?
I need the motion to adjourn.
One thing, we did not vote on the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.